Yes.
Oh, yes.
Shall we call our meeting to work?
Yeah, let's go.
Yes, how lovely, what a great idea.
Good evening, everybody. Is there a request to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Nothing for me, nothing.
Wonderful, so I move to approve the order of items for the regular and the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Uh, President's Verbal Report, so I guess, I would tell you, I've looked through the book, we've been through the audit, Alan, thank you for being here. Thanks to Alan and his team for the, the audit, which I know you guys read every word, it's much appreciated.
Everybody, everybody.
And, uh, but yeah.
You memorize it.
Yeah, I know as you guys see in the budget, we're doing great financially with our stewardship over our assets, so I think that's fantastic. Again, there was a lot of work done by the Policy Committee, thank you for my, my fellow Policy Committee member on the handbook, and, uh, Alan, thank you for being fun with me.
Great.
Tara, would you like to take it up for your book?
Yes, I do have some things to mention. Uh, well, in my written Director's Report, I mentioned that we shared the welcome, um, email series. This is a series of emails that we've been giving to new cardholders, and somebody at this table had the idea of sharing them with all the trustees.
Yes.
Well, um, we started-
I don't think it was me, I think it was somebody else.
Stop you, come on.
I, I can't take credit for somebody else's idea.
Well, we, we took that idea and ran with it, and every week in the month of September on Tuesday, every cardholder is getting this series of emails.
Yay.
And Shayna mentioned, Shayna Conley, one of our Delta Services librarians, that, um, a man came in, a patron came in, and had received the email about all the streaming services and the digital downloads. He was very, very excited, he had no idea that we had any of those, his card had expired a couple of years ago. She got him all set up with his card to be refreshed, and taught him how to do hoopla and canopy, and press reader, and he was very excited, he was gonna drag his wife in the next day and have her update his card too. So, that was just a really nice story of, yeah. For attention of those emails, yeah.
I like the extra credit.
Yeah, so that was Catherine's idea, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, alright, well, with the Fall Newsletter, I feel like the Library Design Project is really out in the public now. People know about it, yeah. People haven't really said much, I think Celia said one man came in and said, like, when is it gonna start? She's like, oh, still got some work to do.
Yeah.
Um, so with the Fall Newsletter article, and this Thursday, the furniture fair is opening up. So what this means is, American Interiors, which is the furniture dealer we're working with, and Jenna and Chloe, have arranged for several pieces of furniture to come to the library. They'll sit in, um, like, the lobby slash commons area, and also in the entrance to youth services. Uh, the goal of this is to have people vote on which furniture they like. These aren't necessarily representative of pieces that we will be getting, certainly not colors or finishes. So if you look at, I have no idea what they're bringing, but if you look at it and think it's ugly, it's not gonna be that color. We're really looking for people to say, like, I like cushiony chairs, or I want a chair with arms. We're really looking for style, utility, engagement, logistics, engagement, yeah.
And to feel a part of.
And to feel a part of it, definitely.
And how many pieces are they going to be bringing in?
I don't know.
Do you know?
I don't know.
A lot.
It sounds like a lot.
Yeah.
And is it just, um, chairs and, and that, or is it gonna be tables and?
Mostly chairs, because those are the things that are-
Right.
So finicky, so different people, body types. Um, so yeah, we're gonna put posters out to explain what's happening, there will be some flyers, there will be, uh, multiple ways for people to vote, both digitally and analog. Uh, so we hope that this creates some excitement, some conversations, some buy-in, um, around this project. All of the furniture will be there for two weeks through October 7th. And, um, yeah, I hope that you guys come in too and take a look at what's out.
Absolutely.
Also, remember that, um, Catherine and Richard have created a page on our website devoted to the Library Design Project. So we will be using that to post updates, especially when we get into the construction phases, and we'll have to talk about, you know, this area is closed, or whatever it might be. Um, but just, uh, remember that, so if you encounter any folks, neighbors, friends who are wondering about it, you can refer them to that. Um, speaking of the Fall Print Newsletter, I'm not sure if you noticed that it grew this quarter. Since the May- yes, there's the, uh, two extra pages. So that was, um, I wanna thank the administration, um, Library Assistant, two Laura Moore, for redesigning that, she sat at the desk, right? That, that was a lot of work to redesign.
It looks great though.
She's very talented.
Very talented, yes. And then my last thing to mention is that tomorrow afternoon, well, I guess morning into the afternoon, um, we will be celebrating Karen Effimoff, Karen is one of our library pages. She has worked at this library for fifty years. As of yesterday.
Yeah.
Yes, she started when she was, I think, sixteen or seventeen years old, and, um, she's worked as a library page.
Can you ask, like, somebody from the news or somebody to hear?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Detroit News or Free Press, they always do, like, uh, uh, feel-good, yeah, feel-good story, I think that would be fun.
Yeah.
It might still come out.
So you are all invited to, it's from eleven to two in the community room, it'll be, um, a wonderful event. And that's all, yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. The next item is our monthly review of checks and the budget, does anybody have any specific comments?
I do know.
Uh, TechLogic, I didn't recognize that.
TechLogic is the vendor for our automated materials handler, the-
Oh, yes.
Machine that checks in.
Is that, uh, monthly or annual?
So that's twenty-three grand down the bottom of page five.
Did I have, um, it would be annual, annual payment on the service agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what you say there, I'm twenty-four. Anybody else?
Authors, Unbound.
That was for me, um, guess.
That was for Catherine Arden, which we ended up canceling.
Oh, yes.
So we'll get a, we'll get some of that money back, and we'll get all this money.
The only thing I had on page, um, seven, this is our budget, as you guys can see, the budget looks pretty much like it did last month. We're, we're, we're all within the variances, other than the, you know, which we're under on the capital outlay, and of course, the timing on the taxes, so I thought that was fine. And then if you skip forward to nine, again, you can see, the vast majority of our funds are getting a four-point-seven percent return on an annual yield basis, which is great. So we can keep it going.
Yeah.
So, um, we've got a motion then, if there's nothing further on that, on page ten, I'm happy to read it. Um, I move to approve the monthly cash dispersments in the forms and amounts, and the check numbers noted for a grand total of seven-hundred-and-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Um, and then, um, I motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, I'm sorry.
Aye, aye, that one's passed.
We've been through-
Lyndon, I'm doing right, right, alright.
Great work.
Okay, remember the call of the public, Jane, what do you got for us?
Alright, so SOC, we, um, had bingo for people, employees who wanted to participate, and we made eighty-nine dollars. We netted sixty-four because we gave out twenty-five dollars worth in prizes. Um, we sent a check to MLA, Michigan Library Association, for their advocacy resource fund. Um, those were the casualty funds from July and August. And then through September to October, those casualty funds will go to the Birmingham Bloomfield Community Coalition.
Good, that's a good one.
And that's all I have, I think.
Nice question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate it.
Oh, actually, I do have one quick question. Years ago, maybe a couple of years ago, you used to have, um, purses that you would bring and sell, are you still doing that?
We haven't done that in a while.
Cause I got some purses that I would bring for you guys to sell.
Okay.
You could talk about it, but we could, yeah.
Yeah, cause that was fun, they had some good things.
Hannah has a few I can bring, I'm sure. You wouldn't even notice.
Probably, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
Tell you, remove one.
Yeah, you'd be like, what, what, what's happened?
If you took one golf club from me, I'd know it, but I love the first. Tara, you wanna take the one?
Um, yeah, we'll talk about the unfinished business, uh, revisiting the strategic plan conversation, which has been ongoing. Um, so, at the last meeting, we decided to extend the plan through twenty-twenty-eight, and we added, this was Keith's, um, it's on the record, Keith's, recommendation to add a reference to artificial intelligence, which I found was a really great addition, so we did do that. Um, and one of the goals, we added that, uh, so, I just wanna hear that this is okay with everyone, and it's great.
Alright.
Yep.
And we've got a strategic plan for a couple more years. Great, that's all for that one.
And we have committees on AI, uh, do you wanna see that?
Yep, we have a staff committee, uh, working on artificial intelligence, Lyndon is actually chairing that for us. It's made up of about, well, like, six or seven staff, I think there's actually eight, there's almost two people from most departments. And a variety of positions, so, um, there's already a lot of interesting perspectives coming out of that, and I'm excited about that. Thank you for doing that. Alright, should I just keep going?
Yeah. You're all fired.
Alright, we're, um, to the twenty-four, twenty-five audit presentation from Alan Panther of Yo and Yo. Uh, so let me just say that I wanna thank all the staff who were involved in this, especially Kathy Robashevich.
Our new finance leader.
She's not here, she was present at the Finance Committee.
Oh, gotcha.
Um, and Erin Przynski, who was our temp accountant from Plant Moran, she was wonderful and helped Kathy learn so much, because Kathy had not done this previously, so Kathy, uh, that really helped. Um, the team at Yo and Yo was really great to work with, this year went really, really smoothly, um, everything just worked. Thank all of you, this is one of your primary duties, to monitor the library's finances, so I thank you for your review of this. And thanks to all the library staff who follow all of our procedures, and, uh, make sure internal controls are working. I think that as a team, we do a great job of being good stewards of funds, and I think our audit shows that. So with that, I will turn it over to Alan. Um, you all should have a copy of, uh, financial statements at your place, and he's got a presentation as well.
Great, thanks Tara, appreciate it. Um, so I guess the first couple of bullet points that I have about the materials and my introduction are unnecessary, because Tara's sitting there. Also, um, you know, I usually talk about how the audit went, and I completely agree and echo what Tara just said, um, as far as the audit went very well. Um, we did push it back a couple of weeks this year, uh, just to allow for the turnover, um, but that wasn't an issue at all. Get to give a couple of extra weeks, and, um, you know, we could have presented this audit, you know, earlier, um, but we talked about it, and it sounded like you guys had some things on your agenda in July and August that, um, kinda superseded that. So we said, you know, we'll just, we'll just leave it for September, that's fine, um, so, uh, everything went, went really well. And, uh, we really did appreciate, you know, working with Kathy, working with Erin from Plant Moran, that was all fantastic. Um, so, even though you guys had a tur- a significant turnover in your business office, um, you know, the library didn't miss a beat in terms of its finances, which is really good, so, congratulations on that. So our audit included an examination of the financial reporting process, internal controls, and also certain aspects of legal compliance. Um, I'm pleased to report that we have no written audit findings based on that consideration, no suggestions for improvement. Um, that is a positive reflection on management, it's a positive reflection on the board, and it also tends to keep my presentations a little bit more brief. Um, so my plan for this evening is to give you, um, some key takeaways from the audit, and also to answer any questions that you might have. We had a lengthy discussion at the Finance Committee last week, um, so I don't plan on going into a huge level of detail as like we did in that, um, uh, setting. So, uh, and I do plan to follow the presentation that's over my shoulder here, and you also have hard copies of it, uh, that I've distributed, so. And please interrupt me with questions at any time. Alright, so the first page of the, uh, presentation, uh, references the Independent Auditor's Report. The purpose of an audit is to give you an opinion on your financial statements, not to detect fraud, and not to give assurance on internal control. So, it's a very important concept about what it is that we're here to do. We're here to give you an opinion on your financial statements, which is what this slide, uh, references. So this is our opinion on your financial statements, we're giving what's called an unmodified or clean opinion, that is the best opinion you can get, and it means a couple of things, it means, first of all, the statements are formatted in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So in other words, everything that's supposed to be there is there, and also based on the procedures that we've performed, the numbers are good. So unmodified opinion is what you wanna say. Alright, the next slide, um, deals with the balance sheet, and this just shows the general fund, uh, it does not show the gift fund, um, but it is a SNAT or OPEP trust, it's a snapshot as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, uh, and, uh, what I'd like to talk about here is fund balance. So in the, the one column there, second number up from the bottom, total fund balance nineteen million, one seventy-five, two nineteen. Um, that is, as you can see, the fund balance is broken down in a few different categories. There's non-spendable, that corresponds to the prepaid you see up above, there's committed, that's cash flow. What that basically means is you guys levy your property tax in December, and by March, you've collected most of it. Um, there's some delinquents there, but you've collected most of your taxes by that point. So you're, you've basically got all the money that you need to go into the next year. So, um, that is seven months of operating, um, capability there that's, that's set aside for the operations of the upcoming year. So that's what that committed for cash flow is. And then the assigned for, and it says OPEB, compensated absences and capital improvements, um, so that assign that five-point-four million dollars is, um, that's basically an assignment is a, is a, is a statement of purpose, so it, it, it's just communicating what your intentions are to, to use that money. So that, uh, is an assignment that, uh, covers, um, the entire compensated absences liability, so everything that you could potentially owe to employees should they depart. Uh, the net OPEB obligation, so you have, you offer OPEB, that's post-employment benefits, um, other than pensions, to, uh, some of your employees. Uh, and, uh, so that entire liability is part of that assigned fund balance. Uh, and the remainder, which is about two-point-seven million dollars, is, um, is assigned for capital purchases. So I imagine a lot of that's gonna be used for your redesign, um, project, so. Um, so that's your, and then there, the unassigned is, is what's left over. So, uh, we measure the adequacy of fund balance, so how much fund balance do we have, how much should we have, how much, how does that compare to past trends and potentially other governmental units, uh, as a percentage of annual expenditures. So, uh, this year, the library is at about two-hundred-and-forty-one percent of annual expenditures, last year's about two-hundred-and-thirty-six percent, so it went up a little bit. We'll talk about that on the next page. So, uh, this library has a very healthy fund balance that allows for flex- flexibility and a cushion against bad economic times, money for capital improvements, funding of employee benefit costs, and all of those other things. Okay, next page, Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. Again, this is just the general fund, shows how fund balance changed. So I'll kinda skip to the bottom line, which is actually the third line up from the bottom, net change in fund balance, two-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-and-fifty dollars. That is how much your fund balance increased this year in general fund. How did we get there? Total revenues, um, the first total there is, uh, ten-million-three-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, uh, that is up about seven-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, about seven percent. Most of that is, uh, six-hundred-thousand of that is property taxes, uh, that's just your normal increase in taxable value times the, the mileage rate. Uh, and, uh, a hundred-and-forty-two-thousand of that is investment income, so as Shane referenced a little while ago, you guys are doing really well on your, your investments, and that's reflected here as well, you can see that investment income, um, is, uh, is, is very strong, and, uh, it was strong last year and even stronger this year. It's a good positive trend there. And on the expenditure side, uh, you can see total expenditure, seven-point-nine million dollars, that's up this year by about eight-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, about twelve percent. Um, sticking into those numbers, there was about three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, that increase, that was more on personnel. Uh, most of that was increased contributions to the pension plan, and about three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand of additional spend on capital this year. So, um, so that accounts for the increase in expenditures. Okay, next one is, uh, I have a little, a graph here, a historical graph, gonna show you a little bit of a trend in the general fund. So this is a five-year graph of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance in the general fund. So you can see the revenues are increasing a little bit every year, um, expenditures tend to bounce around with sp- significant capital projects, which you haven't really had a big one since twenty-twenty-two, which you'll see on the next page too. Um, and fund balance has gone up four out of the last five years. The only year that didn't go up is when you guys kinda spent down the fund balance in twenty-twenty-two, and I think that was your roof, was the big thing.
I think it's actually the LED lighting.
Oh, right.
Okay, good.
Can I make a comment there? As you can see, the fund balance is growing, and that's not, our mission is not to have a huge bank account.
Right.
But if you look back at a re- I pulled from a recent meeting, our projection going forward is that that will go, and this will depend on timing on the design, uh, and the parking lot, but it goes from, you know, the eighteen million, then to fifteen, then to twelve, so, again, this hopefully is temporary while we, you know, and it all depends on how fast we can get these things done.
We have plans.
Yes, we have plans.
Great, perfect. Uh, the next page, uh, is a graph that, that shows, uh, expenditures, and what we've done here is, uh, we've grouped the expenditures into five largest categories, and we're showing a historical trend. So for personnel, you, what you're looking at there is a five-year trend for personnel, and then the same thing, um, uh, across the board. You can see that, uh, the personnel costs, as you would imagine, have grown steadily over the years. And you can see that, uh, library materials, facilities, equipment, uh, show pretty much the same trend, maybe, maybe a little less dramatic in terms of the increases there. Uh, and then, uh, the capital outlay, you can see the, the spike there in twenty-twenty-two, but really, you know, nothing else that's that big, um, since then. So, um, I would imagine that that portion of this will look quite a bit different next year, so. Alright, last slide is, uh, deals with the governance letter, and that's the stapled letter that's tucked into the, um, into the financial statements that I passed out. It's, uh, distributed with the audit, it's a, it's a, it's addressed to, uh, management and the Board of Directors. Most of it's a form letter, uh, but it doesn't have to be, uh, it just depends on what we find in our audit, um, and it, it would communicate any significant issues that we run into. Um, the letter discloses any estimates that are used in preparing the financial statements, any new accounting standards. Uh, uh, there was one this year, and that was GASB one-on-one, deals with compensated absences, so that increased the, the library's liability by a significant amount, I wanna say, five or six-hundred-thousand dollars was, was, was that increase. Uh, discusses any difficulties or disagreements that we had, which of course there were none of those, uh, any misstatements we noted, none of those. And if we had any management letter comments, those would be here as well, and we have none of those. So, um, with that, uh, that's all I have, any questions?
I actually do, on the little chart where it says other, what would other be, like, um?
What's an example of that?
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, basically, yeah, what we're, what we're doing is we, we pulled out personnel, library, the ones that you can see there, and other is just like everything else.
Oh, like lawn cutting?
It's like hosted, no, that goes under facilities and equipment.
Oh, okay.
So let me-
Hosted, lawyer, law, legal fees, auditing, um-
Yeah.
Travel, staff development.
And why was twenty-twenty-three, that was a, a bump in other, was there anything significant?
I don't know, uh, it could have been, um, uh, auditing, a temporary accountant.
Cause we had a lot of employees-
Oh, you know what?
Twenty-twenty-three.
I'm sorry, Judy, you guys, if you look at your, at the budgetary comparison schedule, which is on page four-dash-one of the financial statement, you guys actually have a category for other.
Yeah, it's in our budget, yeah.
So that's, that's, that's your category, not our category.
Four dash what?
Four dash one.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's your budgetary comparison schedule.
Or if you look at our, the general fund report that's always in the board packet, that has, it doesn't have every single thing that's in other, but it has quite a few. The only thing I can think of for that twenty-twenty-three, uh, could have been, oh, that doesn't make, I was thinking maybe it was when we had temporary accounting services.
That's what I was thinking too.
But that would be, that would have been like twenty-twenty-two.
And nothing with personnel, like?
No, cause other is like a lot of-
Another I'm talking about, the issue you have.
No, that would have been like twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one.
That was your first year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-one.
We're not gonna go over the financials, right?
No, that was all I was gonna do.
Yeah, I just have one question, you, you guys made all the changes we talked about, thank you for doing that, except the building depreciation's still sixty years, why is that?
Because I missed it.
Okay, that's good enough.
Yeah.
And then the other, just for-
What, what did you wanna change it to?
No, it's just a typo.
Oh.
Um, there's a, there was something else, if you, when you, if and when you get to it, there's a, a description of how our results have gone your rear, and Tara and the rest of the team did a great job of noting the contributions of the friends, and that they've been instrumental in providing success to us, and they're great partners, and I thought it was really well done, and if they ever see it, they'll be appreciative.
Maybe I should share with them.
Wouldn't hurt to highlight that, so.
Here's the hundred-page audit.
Yeah, you should, you did, I'm actually going to read it aloud as part of your next meeting. I don't see a motion, is there any action that we need to take?
Just one, just one cl- one last question.
There was one.
Is it where?
On page, um, I saw it, page twenty-seven, I think you just have to say, I accept the audit and file it.
I assume it was in the, in the fore, from the back, up and front.
Could I just ask one question before we do that?
Sure.
On the personnel costs, they tend to suggest that they're going up rapidly, quickly, almost exponentially. Um, is there any reason to believe that that trend will fall off at some point?
I don't think so, nothing gets any cheaper for people, and they need more-
So the, is this a reflection of raises, or?
Raises, it's increases in healthcare, it's increases in the contributions to the, um, retirement fund, OPEB.
And we also adjust any salaries.
The way they, yes.
Yes, when did we do that, what, the conference?
We did that, you know, that would be from twenty-twenty-three, that was in, um-
That might have been the hiring of the consultants for that.
Could have been that, yeah.
So, yeah. I mean, that would, it's also adhering to governmental, um, requirements now to-
Sick.
Sick time and paid.
It has gone up a little bit more in the last couple of years, um, I mean, we're fully staffed now, and retention is important, so we wanna try to retain people. Um, but I always try to keep our personnel expenditures around seventy percent or under of our total expenditures, so I watch that really closely.
Okay. And if you see yourself maybe going close to that or over that, do you have levers that you can pull to control that, or?
Um, I would have to start, we wouldn't be able to give as big raises, we might not fill positions that become vacated. Uh, we might have to look at reducing hours in the schedule, those would be the kinds of things that we would have to do.
Okay, thanks.
But we did go through a, a period of time where we had-
We did, Sundays were closed and-
Yeah, yeah, but also just, we had some significant positions that weren't filled.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so we had those vacancies to account for.
Yeah.
But I think, Terry, you had a comment about staff were generally happy, but they were interested in knowing how they could be promoted.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, in terms of cost of personnel, that kind of jumped out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I just pulled up our budget, and you can see, if you go back three years, it's mostly salaries and wages, two-eight to three-three, but then social security's up fifty grand, employee insurance is up two-hundred grand, retirement is up, actually, retirement's flat, so it is a couple of things. But I, I think your point's a good one, which is, if, if we get to a point where we need to, there are, there are things we can do, as unpalatable as they may seem.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But if we see that sort of exponential behavior continue another year, then.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Alan?
Thank you for, for hearing, yes, all of us, for all the work.
Yes, thank you.
Should we let Alan stay for the motion?
Sure.
You can find it, you'll love finding it.
I will find out that fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five audit report is presented and placed on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-seven.
It's gonna be so.
As always, you're welcome to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got the employee handbook coming up, if you want.
We had a long meeting at, at, at our library last night, so.
You just go all the way back to Clarkson.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate you guys.
Oh, that's nice, thank you.
This is, how many years?
I don't even know.
And don't you serve on- And don't you serve on the Clarkson Board, Library Board?
I do, yeah, Clarkson, the Pettis District Library, yeah, I'm on board.
Yeah.
Were we the impetus for that? What?
Kind of be like the library.
Partling, partling.
Like libraries. And yeah, you get an insight.
Yeah, but it helps me understand more about really what you guys are dealing with, because I sit in your chair.
Sure. Good. Yeah.
Exactly the same.
Good for you. How large is your board?
Um, there are seven of us.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we have an odd number.
And is it elected like we are, or is it?
No, we're appointed, um, I'm an appointee of ta- of uh Independence Township, which is where I live.
Gotcha.
So district library, right?
So it's a district library, we're district library, yeah, so we have, we have appointees from Independence Township and the city of the village of Clarkston. So, yeah, yeah, but it's great.
Twenty's town name.
Yeah.
City of the Village of Clarkston.
Right, right.
The city of the village.
Well, they, they have their traditions, right, you know, it's very traditional, they have their historical, you know. Downtown and all that, if you've ever been out to Clarkston, you know.
Yeah, it's great.
It's very pretty.
It is.
How many physical locations do you have?
Just one.
Just the one.
Yeah, we just have the one, the branch, they have the one, one location, so, yeah, we're not quite as big as you guys are, but. It's okay.
Yeah.
But anyways.
Thanks, Alan, thanks you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll keep going here.
Alright, take care.
Thank you. Bye, Alan, nice to see you.
Okey dokey.
It's on page eighty-three.
Thank you. Could you just remind me, do we have a? There you go. Um, do we have a? Contract with Yo-Yo or a specified amount of time?
No, 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 we used to do, every three years, we would go out for.
RFP.
RFP.
And is there a best practice with that?
Um.
There's a concept of auditor rotation, so maybe you should have somebody else come in and look.
Yes.
Right.
We've had the same auditor for twenty-two years at my company, so I don't take it too seriously.
Okay.
I think they do a great job, they're, you know, they're responsive, they explain, you know, they, they're flexible, which can be very helpful, so.
Yeah, I, I feel confident that they're doing a great job.
Good for, I can't remember. Uh, it just came to me, it's very big, and um, so we sent out the RFP, and they almost doubled in price, so, yeah, and um, so. It's, it, yeah, I can see the building.
Library room.
Yes, thank you, how did you know?
Yes, but if we ever felt like we wanted to just sharpen our pencils and get it, we would do a whole RFP process, and we would, um, yeah.
Personally, I think that Alan's fantastic, I think that he does a great job for us, I think that he has, he knows how libraries operate.
Yeah.
He um, has a, you know, good understanding of this library. And we have had some big changes, you know, especially in the finance department, so um, I appreciate that he's been. Flexible and that he could see that we had these changes and still.
He's been a great consultant too, through those changes, I called on him to help me, you know, advise me on things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Alright, moving on to the employee handbook, oh, another hundred pages or so for you guys to read, and I know you read every word. Well, this really is an, an important document that we use constantly here at the library, I refer to it a lot, all the department heads refer to it a lot. The finance coordinator refers to it, um, we give it to every employee upon them signing an offer letter, so we use this document frequently. The last update was in twenty twenty one, and even though only four years have passed, there have been a lot of changes. Um, both inside this organization and from without, that have precipitated a need for a change in our employee handbook. Many changes, really. So, I'd like to go through those changes just at a very high level view, and if there are any questions that you have along the way, please don't hesitate to ask. Well, but first I have to thank a lot of people again. Catherine was instrumental in going through the handbook and um revising the gendered language to non-gendered, and she. Uh, consist, made capitalizations consistent and found a lot of typos, um, it's one of Catherine's superpowers, so I thank her for that. Lyndon helped out with this too, because Lyndon uses this employee handbook all the time as well. And then, of course, the policy committee of Shane and Joy, and Judy actually started this process, because we started this a year ago, a little over a year ago. So thank you all for your um minds on this as well. So there were some really obvious changes we needed to make, such as updating the vision and the mission, because we changed those slightly in our last strategic plan. We condensed the library history section, it was a narrative of a couple of pages, and we condensed it into kind of a bullet point timeline. And we added our latest accomplishments of the sixtieth anniversary and the village renewal in twenty twenty four. As I mentioned, we incorporated non-gendered language throughout, we used capitalizations consistently throughout. We made a lot of changes to department names and job titles, so we had to update those. We updated the protected classes that are part of the hiring and discrimination section, so there's just some um added classes to that, and I can look at that in more detail in a second. Uh, we added the paid parental leave that you all approved last October, and that was just added wholesale, um, just copy and paste it in. Uh, likewise with the whistleblower protection policy. And then um earned, the Earned Sick Time Act or ESTA, uh precipitated a lot of changes um in giving all employees sick time. So we had to add the stipulations that are from ESTA, we also had to make a distinction between employees who receive that sick time and employees who receive. Other kinds of time, we use the term benefited versus non-benefited, so we had to incorporate that throughout. So let me just um go through the handbook really quick, and I'll call out the pages that have substantive changes on them. I use that comment feature, so on page nine.
You just sprayed.
Good, on page ninety-two, which is a reference to the page number in the PDF, not in the handbook. That's where we added our accomplishments of the last couple of years. Uh, scrolling forward to page ninety-three, that's where we added the mission and vision updated. Scrolling forward to page ninety-five, that's our employment philosophy, and that is one of the places where the protected classes were updated. The two that were added were gender identity and genetic information.
And where did this language come from?
Our attorney, uh Scott Patterson at Wutzel.
Okay.
Um, moving forward to page ninety-seven, this is the section that talks about our orientation period. Um, we have a ninety-day orientation period, and during that time, folks are restricted to using paid time off in a very limited way. And um, the ESTA stipulates that the ori- people have to be able to use their sick time at least within a hundred and twenty days of being hired, so we had to update that. Just a little bit further down the page is where we updated all the job positions that changed. And then I think it's several pages.
Speaking of the conference class.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, page one oh five, we added access to employee files, I think that was Shane's suggestion. We also updated the lost property section to be a little bit less detailed, um, and we just referred to the fact that we have a procedure for handling lost items in our circulation department. And then we scoot forward to page one ten, where this is where we had to update the discrimination section or the protected classes again. Next page, one eleven, same thing. One twenty-three. Is that where we add the paid parental, oh, that's the whistleblower protection act or policy, so that has been added. And then paid parental leave is in here. One forty.
I have one forty.
One. One forty-one, oh, page one forty-one is where we um explained what we mean by benefited and non-benefited. And then the ESTA information is incorporated under using paid time off, especially under the sick time section, so we added the. Very specific reasons that people can use sick time. Because people need to be aware of their.
What was the difference between the yellow highlighting and the?
The red, it's just, the red is where I made a comment, and then the yellow is just um highlighted.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, yeah, there's a big section there.
Yes.
The yellow under the employee needs is what also came from Scott, right?
Okay.
What thirty-five is paid currently?
Thank you, that's the directly out of the ESTA law. And then page one fifty-five is the paid parental leave. Which we've, where somebody is on paid parental leave right now, so that can handy. So those are the changes that we made, um, of course, we updated the table of contents, and then I will distribute this um. To all employees, and we'll have them sign an acknowledgement that they've received it. Which I will count as their um conflict of interest acknowledgement as well. Uh, so as I mentioned, we have in here that we do, we review the conflict of interest statement annually. And you all are supposed to disclose if you know of any conflicts of interest, so we have that, oh, you've already got yours done.
I did.
You should have a, a piece of paper at your station, um, and if I can collect those at the end of the night or give them to Lyndon. So any comments or questions on the employee handbook, anything you think we missed?
So interesting, some of the changes are so interesting, things you just don't think about them.
Yeah, and thank you for truly, yeah.
But this is so important to, to go through this, and it's, can only serve. The staff better, you know?
Right, right, right. Thank you for some tedious work and time.
Yeah, Catherine.
No worries.
Everyone who worked on it, um, a lot of emails.
A lot of redlined copies.
Very good.
May I move to adopt the employee handbook as revised and presented?
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Woo, wanna do that for a couple seconds?
Shane gets to pick this one.
Oh, yeah, I see. He picked the two.
We all know where my strengths lie, and it isn't the pressure for me.
Well, it occurred to me that you're fulfilling two of your du- main duties tonight, reviewing finances and policies.
I didn't have to prepare at all for this meeting, because I've read all those things already.
Several times. Alright, well, now we're on to item C, proposed library board meeting start time, were you surprised by this?
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah, I was.
I was, I was a little bit surprised, actually.
I don't remember, I don't remember the discussion in July.
We did have a discussion.
Oh, oh, that's why I was surprised, okay.
Um, Shane had noticed that the.
Thanks for that. One of the board members.
The stars of the ass.
Um, the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees moved, it proposed moving their meeting start time in July.
Yeah.
To six thirty.
But that's what, say again.
Bloomfield Township's.
Oh, there's go for so long.
There's go for so long.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Do they?
Yeah, there's go, uh, for hours and hours.
So I'm editing corrected that. Or did it say?
It says Bloomfield Township Board of.
Did they actually move it?
Yes, they passed it last Monday, the eighth.
Oh, okay, that's.
Yeah, now, we are not tied to them, we don't have to change our time, but um it was proposed that we consider it. It really doesn't make much impact on us as library staff or the building, I mean, we have to do some work to get the word out, but it's completely doable.
I just had one question when I read that, um, and the only one was the month that we have our um. Grants that we get, not grants, but scholarships, yeah, because coming at six, as you know, I got here so early, because I, I saw the traffic as I was coming south, um, how busy it was. So that would be the only thing that I would be concerned about, but other than that, I didn't, no.
Does anybody think not want to do it, again, as Tara said, there's no religion here, it's just something.
I was, I was okay with it, but then when I heard that it was Shane's idea.
You were saying, yeah.
Understood. I, it's perfectly fine with me.
I would prefer we didn't, but if the, if the majority want to change it, so be it.
And I thought the um board members who work would not want to come at six thirty because you're in a rush from coming from your jobs.
No, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a concern of ours.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay. I mean, I can come in time.
I'm hearing a lot of ambivalence.
I don't care either way, I would, I would actually prefer starting earlier, but.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, early, early, I'm early, early, you want to flip the coin?
No, if, if the majority of people want to change it, I'll, I'll accept that, so.
Should bring dinner in.
A- actually, I'm thinking more about my dance schedule, that's so selfish of me, so, but.
Yeah, although, I mean.
So.
You know, it's your life.
That's fine, I'll work something out, so.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
We can table this item, to see if you can work something out.
I'm sure I can work it out, but.
Well, I took the li- well, Lyndon took the one, I tried to mention.
Well, we won't ask you three-ish.
No, you better.
You can throw may.
To approve changing the start time of the library board trustees meeting from six, to six thirty PM, starting November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, all in, oh, this is the motion, is anybody saying?
That's the motion, so you're moving that.
Yes, so somebody needs to second that.
I will second it.
All favor.
Hi.
Alright, alright, we're changing.
Thankfully passed.
Yes.
Just make sure, tell us.
November eighteenth.
Big headline.
Six thirty, yeah, so we will, this, I suggested that we make the change in November, that will give us some time to um. Update it all the places and for the public to adjust to that time as well.
Actually, I won't be here in November, so.
Oh.
But that works out.
Well, just starting it after the.
Just a change.
She should just not come to meetings.
And uh. Can you update the?
The calendar, yes, yes, yeah, yes, we will do all the.
Calendar, I think, yeah. I just tried to, but I, I can't.
And to the, it's all by either me or Lyndon, yeah.
Public, so.
Public would need to know that as well.
I think I need a lot of reminders.
That's what I just said, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'm still gonna need it, it's gonna take, yeah. Yeah, we'll do, update it for the public and.
But I think we're still to be CD. We have to public the fact that the township is moving it up to, but I, I mean, to your point.
Yeah. Is that fine? I, we haven't asked yet, but um, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Well, you guys do with your text, Alex, yeah.
Right.
Um, who is the other group we had talked about, uh, well, SOC.
The school?
Oh, I'm sorry, but I'm. We were just talking about this before the meeting, somebody else we would have to.
Uh, I know the Bloomfield Township puts it in their newsletters, it's on our website, I think the schools, but we'll, we'll call for all the places.
That's what I was, yeah.
And this room is secured, and, okay, you don't have a late function in here.
Yeah.
You all take, you all take. You can outline them. Alright, well, that's, that's, that's a thing that happens, that's where the change.
And a change.
You saying that out or just thinking about your?
Alright, um, last item on the agenda, this is great, you guys, we're gonna be less than an hour, we answered big things, um.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah, good going there.
I got a lot of that.
Are you got a lot of questions on the bank signatories?
You have a great tour.
Under others. It all started.
The last one is we have to update bank signatories um due to Catherine's changing of her last name. Um, I don't have any other paperwork for you to sign tonight, but we're just gonna pass the resolution, and then I'll reach out to those who I need to, and we'll, we'll figure it out from here, it'll be fine. So, again, we have to do this every time, there's a personnel change or a name change or a position change. And there's a motion on page one sixty-six, if anyone would be interested in reading that.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing signatures including facsimile signatures for banking services on behalf of the Bloomfield Township Public Library as presented effective September sixteen, twenty twenty five. Second.
All favor.
Hi. Now it's official.
Thank you.
Yeah. Federal government, whatever.
Not by social security.
I agree.
I wonder if the facsimiles come up these days.
Well, no, that's so we can use electronic signatures, facsimile signatures, yeah.
Okay. That means electronic too.
Yeah, I was thinking what you were thinking.
Medical offerings.
Not facsimile.
It's auto, yes.
And auto pens, yes.
Signer, yeah, they signer.
We don't do that very often, I promise.
So are we getting anything else on the list?
That's. Um, discussion of, no, we don't have any items. Um, and we don't have to do the motion, I think we're at other.
You wanna go?
I don't have any other, other.
Would the, um, I wanna talk about that call, that one customer.
That's right, you wanted to talk about in the comments, um, in the comments packet, there was a complaint about a patron looking at inappropriate material.
Oh, yes.
Alright, so let me tell you the whole. Alright, so let me tell you the whole story. Um, a patron was in the computer center. Um, he was using a computer right next to a study room, and um a, a tutor was in the study room with five or sixteen girls. The tutor came out and spoke to a staff person and said that the man was looking at material that was inappropriate, and the girls had seen it. And so the staff person went to the person, the man using the computer, and asked him to stop what he was looking at, stop looking at what he was looking at, which he did, and then he left a few minutes later. Um, the person, the, the tutor alleged that the staff person pointed out the tutor and the girls in the study room as the ones who made the complaint to the man. And so the tutor was upset that um, you know, they had been identified to this person who was doing unsavory things in the library. And then the, one of the girls went home and told her mother about it, and as you saw in that comment, the mother kind of sat on that for a couple of days, and then um reached out to me via email. Um, we, that patron has, is, was irregular. I don't think that he's been back since this incident happened. He was identified to all of the people who have person in charge responsibilities. We were able to use our new security cameras to great effect um throughout this incident, so everybody is aware of who this person is, everybody's aware of the behavior. Um, we had two people looking at inappropriate material that week. Um, I was able to, I responded to the, the mother and s- and let her know all of this, that we had filed an incident report. We had identified the person. We told him to stop. Um, we had no reason to believe that he um identified the girls or the tutor or was gonna do any retaliatory activities. Um, that set her at ease. We had a couple of emails back and forth. She was fine with the outcome. I don't know if the tutor and the girls have been back, but they all seem to be fine with it, all's well that ends well, I guess. So that is that story.
And my sense is that the woman complaining is not wrong. I wouldn't want.
No, I know she's wrong at all.
Sure.
It's that guy, you know, but I also bet that's maybe not what really happened.
Yeah.
Exactly, right.
That's what it sounded like from what you're saying.
When I watched the video recording, um, do we record sound also?
Okay.
No. He was sitting, the, the study room was like right there, if he, if his computer was here. And the tutor and the, you could see that the girls were like giggling about it and probably making some noise. Those rooms are not soundproof. I'm sure he was aware of the commotion. And then the tutor came out of the room a couple of times, so she was pretty conspicuous herself. I never saw the staff person say, like, go like that or anything like that, but I assured the mother that we spoke to the staff person, we talked about maybe better ways of doing this in the future. We, we did as much as we possibly could to, to train everyone.
Sure.
And I, this is a guy who's got a background in this, but is that okay? Do they have some ability to do that or must, do they have to have one of those hoods? Is there, do we know, I don't even, what are, do we know the rules?
We don't have filters on our computers.
Right, and so that gets me to wonder, like, what does this mean that it was inappropriate?
That's a great debated point, because nobody else saw it. I think maybe the staff person saw it, but we've heard it was topless women. We heard it was scantily clad women. We heard it was young girls. It, it's.
They don't have any history when you go back.
There's a big difference between that.
No.
There's a big difference between that.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
We don't have filters on our computers. We do not have privacy screens. If somebody's looking at something inappropriate, we tell them to stop. We say, hey, you're, what you're looking at is not appropriate for this place, this venue. Stop.
But you don't ask them to leave at that?
If they don't stop, if they do it again, then we would ask them to leave.
And if it was clearly underage, to your point, Dan, we would call the police.
Yes, yes. Right, yes.
Because that is illegal, just unsavory.
Right, correct, right.
Alright, is everyone trained in that regard? Because those are very awkward conversations.
Super awkward, yes, we talk about it. We'll be talking about it at the next PIC meeting.
Tomorrow, we have a refresher.
Okay, good. Well done.
Yeah.
Any other, other?
I will say on a, a different, happier note, um, I am duly impressed with, um, because you know, I don't know directions, but when you're heading south on telegraph, um, taking out those shrubs, even though I would like to have lower shrubs
Yeah.
or something put in there with a little color, makes such a difference. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just looks so much better.
I think so, too. It makes the building look so interesting and, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and you see the architecture and um so.
Yeah.
Um, if nothing else, from all the things that we went through, those months and months and months, taking that out.
Good.
I would like to see a little more color in there, because I know we took out the glade of daffodils, um, the undulating glade.
We'll do something there. We, um, yeah, more to come on that.
Yeah. Right, okay. But I just, when I was stuck in traffic today, I looked at it, I wanted to comment, because the light was just hitting it correctly, and it looks so nice, so.
I'm glad, because I was nervous.
I think it looks pretty.
I was nervous too about Judy.
I know, I was nervous about Judy too.
They're ripping her babies out.
Because those shrubs that were there were really interesting too, weren't they?
No, no, they were common, yeah, no, they were, um, but the glade of daffodils were quite beautiful, so, yeah.
Yes, that's what I was thinking of, but I, I thought it looked really pretty.
Yeah, it looks so nice, yeah, and the grass is taken, so.
Yeah.
Clean.
Um, I'm sorry I didn't ask this when we were on the finance, the Charnoff gift, I see that it's maturing. I, I thought it matured a couple of months ago, and are we reinvesting?
Yeah, did we? We've just been rolling it over into overseas.
Okay.
I have, well, I have the plan of turning part of it into a C F S E M endowment.
Okay.
And part of it, um, I thought we could use in our library design project toward, I mean, it would just go into a pot, I guess, but um, that was given with the hopes of buying literature and book club books. So I was thinking it would be nice to say that part of that built the program room for adult teen services.
This is Isabel, right?
Yeah. So, yes, that's coming up due in a couple of months.
And Isabel was a board member.
Right.
And she had to.
Yeah, we were, I worked with her.
Read trees in her yard.
On the personnel committee and directors.
She was really neat, she was a cool woman.
Evaluation. I think she was lovely.
Yeah, very artistic too, yeah. So, okay, thanks for that.
Yeah. May I ask a question about the um Catherine Arden event?
What happened?
Yeah, what happened?
Yeah.
I think it just, she, that she just didn't resonate with the community. We started pitching that in like August?
Yeah, registration opened at the beginning of August, and we did press releases, put it in our circulation notices, newsletter.
Okay. We did all that.
Yeah. Um, and at the time it was canceled, it was, I've been open for registration for over a month and only had fifteen registered attendees
Oh my gosh.
with a capacity of four hundred.
Ah.
Was this gonna be at the school? Is that what it was?
For a larger capacity, yeah.
And it wasn't part of a tour for her. She was gonna make a special trip out here for it and where?
Oh, where is her home?
I think on the west coast.
She's a Y A?
She's done Y, I think she's done books for several ages.
I mean, her name's from there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I've read anything.
But I, um, yeah, I think I looked at it and thought, well, I don't know.
I think everybody, yeah.
Yeah.
It's really disappointing to hear that. I'm sorry that it didn't work out.
I know. But that's okay. We've been um talking that up as uh something we tried, and it didn't quite work. Um, trying to, yeah, instill a atmosphere of trying things that might not always work.
Was the school in any, there wasn't anything of cooperation or like, we weren't doing it with the school? It was just, that was the location.
No, just a play. Okay.
Thank you. Next time that we meet, uh, the library will also be hosting.
Yeah, good point.
Yes, trick or treaters and food trucks in the.
Yep. Yes. Yep, so it'll be happening.
What day is it?
Tuesday, twenty first.
Uh.
Yeah.
I see it right here.
Are you putting out your?
Are you preparing your costume?
I was originally not.
I'm guessing Shane's gonna bake for us. You gonna bake?
Again, not my thing. I mean, I could.
Are you preparing your costume?
Oh.
Did you get a lot of trick or treat?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Uh, no.
Trick or treaters, yeah.